Good afternoon. This is the caucus meeting for April 30th, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, Madam Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the City Clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chambers, City Hall, to 60 High Street, at 5:30 PM as 5:34 PM. The council meeting will follow the caucus and close session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices should you need to make a telephone call. Please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
She's excused.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. So, for the sake of Mr. Green's time, we're going to have the presentation, the introduction of the budget presentation from him.
Yes, our Council President, thank you. And this deals with Resolution 203, authorizing the introduction of the calendar year 2025 budget. As you can see on the screen in front of you, this is the department municipal budget as being introduced. If I can have the next slide, please. Now, with this budget this year, it's approximately $99 million budget, but let me just say, what are the drivers? Because a lot of people say, hey, you hear about it all the time, you hear about the federal budgets, state budget, let's talk about the city of Perth Amboy. The drivers, as you see all around, utilities. I know we're going to experience, all of us unfortunately, are soon going to see an electrical increase at home of about, yes, as you're saying, 17%, unfortunately. Well, guess what? PSCG's costs and expenditures do come to us as a municipality, it'll affect the state as well. Health insurance across the board, I know we realize that at home, if it's hurting you at home, it's going to hurt the municipality as well. That's another driver. Workman's comp, and you'll see the increases, and I'll do that in one of the upcoming slides, but workman's comp is another driver. Liability insurance, we're talking about the car accidents and insurance with regards to that, or insurance for like your home, well, we have structures, as you know, within the municipality, that insurance has also gone, the expenditure there. Pensions, it's something that we want because we value our employees, right? So, with that, they also have, many people have a 401K, well, similar to that, municipal employees, state employees have the pensions. That's another driver. And a smaller, but it's a part of it, but it's much smaller salaries, and that's all your municipal workforce, because again, they work for us, we want to make sure they have fair and adequate contracts. So, those are the six drivers you'll see with this budget. With those drivers, we also try to take steps to see how we can, the mayor was saying, how can we essentially reduce costs if there aren't any ways that we can try to reduce the growth within the budget? And so, we took a balanced approach. Capital spending, we reduced that by approximately $1.9 million. We were trying to see what things we can do with insurance costs, because like we said, those are drivers, we're trying to see how we can control those, and unfortunately, we also had to use a little bit more of our surplus too, to balance the budget. What does that mean for all of us here? That means there will be a municipal increase, but that increase is about $20 a month that we'll see on our tax bills, on our mortgages. I know no one wants to see an increase, right? And it's hard for us to say, hey, that we're going to unfortunately bear that burden, but like I said, another unfortunate part of life is, we're seeing it at home, of course it's going to affect the municipality as well, and those are the drivers that you see. If we got the next slide, then we can, I saw what it's going to do, numbers, and hopefully you're able to see those numbers, I know my eyes are going bad, I'm going, so, but you can see that there was a drive, and for the drive upwards, so for workman's compensation, when the mayor first took office in calendar year 2021, you see the appropriation there was $712,000. Now for 2025, we're over $2 million, believe it or not. Something that can't really be controlled, right? Liability insurance, again, we see that all at home, where our car insurance, that's going up, well, if that's affecting us at home, it's going to affect the municipalities and the governments as well. So, he started this at 1.7, now the appropriation is at 3.2. It's unfortunate to say, but these numbers are staggering, I know, right? You're looking at it, you're going, oh, wow. Utilities, we've seen that again with gas costs, well, electric costs, $1.8 million we started at, now we're over 2.9. So, these are drivers that are not even within the control of the council nor the mayor, these are costs that are being, unfortunately, we have to bear. Health insurance, it's very important that you take care of your employees, right? And they have families, and they have children, but that health insurance cost, again, no one can, that's a driver that can't be controlled, that went from $11 million to $17 million, and I believe with the state, it's even worse. So, this is just the municipality of Perth Amboy. And then we were talking about the retirement system, where we said that's a pension, you see, that started in 2021 at $5 million, now it's over $7 million. And I said, it's a smaller number, it's a budgeted salaries, and that's a smaller number, but again, we do have to take care of the employees that work so hard for us on a daily basis, right? And those include your police, your fire, includes DPW, includes your administrative staff, because they have to, just like we're experiencing those increased costs, whether it's utilities, that's an increased cost that we have to share too. So, what we're going through is the appropriations for each within the budget. Here is just, you can see through a graph, before we're looking at numbers, this is a graph of the cost and how much they even increased over the past years, from utilities to health insurance to workman's comp. Again, drivers that are not within the control of the municipality. Next slide, please, thank you. And here, what we're doing is trying to show the costs, and this is something where you may have to, because I know if my eyes are bad, I'm sure you're struggling to see it, but at least you get a picture, a reflection of the pie, a pie of this $99 million budget approximately, and how it's broken down. Maybe I can read off some of it to you, because I know some of you might be struggling like I am. So, public safety, that's 28% of the pie, and public safety includes your fire and police. But look, your insurance costs, healthcare, that's liability and workman's comp, that's 25%. That's almost the same amount we're paying for all your public safety employees, you're doing health insurance. It's astounding, but it's a true fact, until we have some way, and it's not, again, not just the municipality of Perth Amboy, but throughout the nation, everyone's struggling with healthcare costs, and how do we try to curb that cost? So, you'll see the different, even debt expense, capital expenditures for debt, and pensions is at 22% of that pie. So, just gives you an idea overall, the spend. But I think, as we go, and we went through the expenditures and appropriations, but also, we would like to know, hey, where are we at currently, and what things have we experienced? And one thing, I think we've seen the impact here in Perth Amboy, is that we've seen streets and roads being paved, and that's a good thing, that's a great thing that we've seen. We're seeing that new parks being renovated, and a lot of that is coming through, thank goodness, the work of, Tashi, thanks for that as well, through receiving grants. I know some people say, hey, grant is still federal money, it's still taxpayer dollars, but again, if we're getting money from different entities and we can utilize that, I think that's something to be proud of, so it's not our money that's driving it. We're seeing with DPW, we're seeing a modernization of automation, the one-hand bandits, the one-armed bandits, I think you see with the garbage collection, and that's a great thing, and let me tell you why. For those municipalities that still have garbage, men picking up and throwing the garbage, that's a driver of workman's comp, because as I throw garbage, my shoulder may get hurt. And again, just to let you know, if someone says that they're hurt, there's a process to that, I can't just claim, hey, Mike Green, I fell off a chair, I have to go to a doctor, and there's a process before I claim workman's comp. So, I don't want to diminish that, if someone does get hurt, they have the right to say, I've been hurt, they go to a doctor, and they follow the legal process before they are compensated. There has been a commitment to financial stability, and our fiduciary responsibility to all of you as the residents, and as of now, I will say, the standard and poor has said A+ with a stable rating. Can that change? Yes, anything can change, because we are using surplus. That's one thing they tell us in law school, if there's an answer, you can always say, hey, anything's possible, because truly, anything's possible. But as of today, standard and poor has said A+, with a stable outlook. Okay? And then, looking ahead, as we know, the mayor, the administration is always focused on technology, having that technology, using technology, and we've seen it in public safety with the license plate readers, we're doing the fiber throughout the parks, so, just trying to bring us to the 21st century of things, for example, even bulk pickup, where people used to have to come into the city, now they no longer have to do that, they can do that online. So, just trying to use technology, to try to make things easier for the residents and stabilize costs. Those are things that we're looking at for the future and continue to do. Now, as we talk about taxes, like I said, it's anytime we have to pay more, and blame me, I feel that too, we're all homeowners here, and you know, we have to pay taxes, no one wants to pay it, even though there's services that we do need, right? And I feel you, like we said, it's going to be approximately $20 more a month, but in the scheme of things, that shows where Perth Amboy is with regards taxes within the county of Middlesex. And we'll have, the next slide, we'll even show it out more dramatically, I think if we turn to the next slide, yes. So, you see where exactly, and you look at the towns within the county of Middlesex, and where Perth Amboy is in red, that's the one thing I can see, right? I'd rather see a blue, so you can see, again, there's only three other municipalities that are lower than Perth Amboy and the county of Middlesex. So, again, trying to stabilize where we can, but realizing, unfortunately, there are drivers that are out there that they can't control, the mayor can't control, and unfortunately, I can't either. And those stabilizers, once again, we're talking about the insurance costs, we're talking, and workman's comp and healthcare are part of that, we're talking about the utilities, and I think we all see that every day when you go and get your gas, well, gas is a little bit less now, right? But one thing we will see with our PSC and G bills, which is a part of this, the lights that you see here, PSC has already said it's going to be a 17% cost for us, all of us, starting in August. And that cost is also, will be reflected in the municipalities, unfortunately. On the next slide. So, the good news too, besides what we were talking about, the roads being paved, the fiber optics being laid throughout the city, the A+ rating, which again, I understand is today, anything can happen tomorrow, but that's their rating today, standard and poor is, St. Perth Amboy ranks the number four on the list of top coastal towns. So, and then the next slide. And I did want to bring this up too, because again, property tax relief is important, and there'll be one application for that coming soon, if I can read more about it. So, it's for seniors, something that they will be able to take advantage of, and it's applying for these three programs, which will be one application in the future, so the senior freeze, the ANCA program in St. New Jersey, and the deadline, as you can see, there would be October 31st, but there'll be more information promulgated regarding that, so seniors are aware, and we can tell all the seniors within our community, all of our loved ones, that they can take advantage of that. And it's up to $6,500 for eligible senior homeowners. So, again, helping seniors stay in place, to stay within the town, the communities that they love. Is there another slide? Oh, so there it is, reducing your property taxes in half, real relief for Perth Amboy seniors, you may qualify up to $6,500 in annual savings, there's a phone number there. Of course, for the young technologists, you know, they'll take a picture of the thing there, and they'll bring us directly to the website, but that's information that will be available for seniors to take advantage, because of all of these drivers, unfortunately, that are not within our control, that will raise property taxes for us. I believe that might be the last slide?
Yep.
Yes. But that's just a little bit of information about the budget. This will be available to, we'll put it on the website next to, along with the budget, which will be there tomorrow, if it is introduced, of course, I don't want to be presumptuous, we'll see what the council does. And as everyone knows, the process is, the council, this is the mayor's portion of it, if the council chooses to, they would introduce the budget, then the next step, they would choose, if they choose to do that, departmental hearings, which you can come and see each one of the departments, talk about their specific budgets, there'll be questions and answers regarding it, and then finally, if there's an adoption of the budget, as you all know. But I just wanted to make sure everyone understands what the directors have done. I'll give you a quick example. So, in the Department of DPW, from last year to this year, the increase in their budget is only $4,300. $4,300 for the Department of DPW. So, that just shows you, the real drivers here are going to be something that's out of their control. It's those utility costs, they can't control that. It's going to be the workman's comp costs, and what we're doing is, we're trying to do more training for employees not to get hurt, one example of that is, like we said, they're throwing out the garbage, so if we can automate the services, that'll help reduce it. It's a liability cost, when Mike Green's driving a car, whether it's a police car or a fire truck or a DPW truck, so we're giving them safety courses to make sure that, hey, being alert and aware, buckling your seatbelt, but at health insurance, I don't know what we can do, because we want to make sure, because they're the ones that take care of us, we'll make sure that they and their family are covered when they go to the doctor as well. But those are drivers, it's not the departments, but we're still, if the council wishes, they will have the departments here as well, but unfortunately, that's out of their control, those areas. But I thank you for your time, I just wanted to explain that to everyone, so at least we get an idea. Again, the questions will be, and Talib Akil will also have the background, and he'll also have the knowledge about these different areas. Of course, Jill has always been here as our CFO, running a tight and steady course, and she'll continue to be here, and they will continue to answer the questions. I'd like to thank everyone, so, for my time here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you for this presentation, and also for the time that you dedicated to our city, it's really appreciated by the council and the residents of Perth Amboy. We hope to see you again, and have a safe trip wherever you're going and wherever you're retiring to. Thank you. Thank you for staying for this presentation, especially.
Can we get a photo with the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Come on. Louis? Louis? You didn't fire him.
Okay. Are we sent? Can you share it? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1186.13]
Parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number three eighty dash eighty-five and amendments. Adopted July second nineteen eighty-five, also known as chapter two fifty-five A. Of the code of the city of Perth Amboy, and this is about addition. Number two, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled filming. Ordinance number seventeen oh one dash twenty thirteen. Adopted October twenty-third, twenty thirteen, also known as chapter two seventeen. Of the code of the city of Perth Amboy. Number three, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled ordinance fixing establishing a schedule of salaries and salary ranges and increments for officers and employees of the city of Perth Amboy. Ordinance number two eighteen dash seventy-nine as amended, adopted July third nineteen seventy-nine. This is for the PBA local thirteen. From January first, twenty twenty-five to January first, twenty twenty-eight. Number four, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance entitled e-mobility devices and lithium ion batteries. Number five, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank NJSA forty A column four dash forty-five dot fourteen. Agenda, public comments. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. Reports. Number one, Fallon Barczewski tax collector submitted the monthly report of collections for the month of March twenty twenty-five. Number two, Jill A. Goldie CFO of Controller submitted a copy of the standards and standard and poor's bond rating report. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Number one, ordinance of the city of the city council of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, authorizing the vacation of certain portions of Front Street and Broad Street pursuant to NJSA forty-eight column sixty-seven dash one. Number two, ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex approving certain amendments to the focus twenty twenty redevelopment plan area one, the gateway pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Number three, ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex approving certain amendments to the focus twenty twenty redevelopment plan area two, the waterfront pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Resolutions, R one ninety-one four twenty-five authorizing emergency temporary appropriations to extend the calendar year twenty twenty-five temporary budget in the, what is the amount here?
Oh, I'm sorry, I never filled it in.
No.
Saw the resolution. First one.
Seven million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. R one ninety-two four twenty-five authorizing release of the performance guarantees to Bridgeport Two, subject to the posting of a two-year maintenance guarantee for eleven sixty State Street block four thirty lat one dot zero two and what that zero three in the amount of sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars with sixty-two cents. R one ninety-three four twenty-five authorizing a refund in the amount of fifty dollars to Raymond Schmidt, a tenant for the return of his key deposit for one key with the Perth Amboy Harborside Marina. R one twenty, one ninety-four four twenty-five authorizing a refund in the amount of fifty dollars to Stuart Conway, a tenant for the return of his key deposit for one key with the Perth Amboy Harborside Marina. R one ninety-four four twenty-five authorizing a refund in the amount of fifty dollars to Carl Noras, a tenant for the return of his key deposit for one key with the Perth Amboy Harborside Marina. R one ninety-six four twenty-five authorizing a refund of the amount of seventy-five dollars to Teresa Fergus, a tenant for the return of her key deposit for two keys with the Perth Amboy Harborside Marina. R one ninety-seven four twenty-five authorizing a refund of bulk appointment fee in the amount of thirty dollars to Aldo M. Revilla. R one ninety-eight four twenty-five authorizing change order number two to the contract with Core Mechanical Inc. for HVAC preventive maintenance at the public safety complex under state contract number fifteen dash X dash twenty-three twenty-two eight in an amount not to exceed the sum of twenty-five thousand, fifty-seven dollars with ninety-three cents. R one ninety-nine four twenty-five authorizing the submission of an application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for Urban Enterprise Zone Assistant Funds for Administration of the Urban Enterprise Zone Program for fiscal year twenty twenty-six in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. R two hundred four twenty-five authorizing submission of an application to the New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety NJDHTS, State and Community Highway Safety Grants, fiscal year twenty twenty-six in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for overtime enforcement and pedestrian safety education materials. R two oh one four twenty-five authorizing a contract with Triget System Inc. for the Runyon WTP Remote Wealth Monitoring and Control in the amount not to exceed two hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars. R two oh two four twenty-five awarding a contract to Sun Sunfeld and Truckia Architects PA for professional architectural engineering service for the Runyon Water Treatment Plan Office Building Replacement in the amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. R two oh three four twenty-five authorizing the introduction of the calendar year twenty twenty-five budget. R two oh four four twenty-five governing body certification of compliance with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission Enforcement Guide on the consideration of arrest and conviction records and employment decisions under title seven of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. R two oh six four twenty-five authorizing the person-to-person transfer plenary retail consumption packet license from PA Spirits to V and R Investment LLC effective May first, twenty twenty-five.
Madam President.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions about this one. Can somebody tell me who V and R Investments is?
I could tell you tomorrow. I don't have that with me right now.
Okay. Can somebody tell me who PA Spirits is?
His name was Martin Sumner. The op, the license never operated.
Oh, okay. But it's a consumption line, a taverns license. So somebody can open up a bar with a license like this.
Yes.
But we don't know who V and R Investments are.
Well, I have that information downstairs, yeah.
Okay. No.
Communication, Mayor Helman J. Cava recognizing employees with work anniversary in March, April, and May twenty twenty-five. Close res, a closed session resolution, R one ninety-four twenty-five authorizing a closed session at the April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five council meeting to discuss the following, anticipated pending litigation. Anything else, Mr. Opal? That's it?
That's it.
That's it? Okay, I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes.
Public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay. Say your name.
Ten ballot, three five nine, Brooke Gavine. A one ninety-eight, this is the second change order for twenty-five thousand. What was the total of that contract and the second change orders? Okay. I missed the beginning of the, the budget because I didn't work. How much is the budget going up?
Five point five percent.
So it's going five point five. So the mayor during his election year didn't raise it any, now it's going up five point five. What's the Board of Education going up? I heard the numbers from eight to fifteen percent. Now, what I'm saying is, you're giving out pilots, knowing that you have to raise taxes. And if you didn't know that, that's incompetence. Because this budget is now made. You didn't put it out yet. Last meeting, I read that you should have copies of it, and that copy should be out not on tomorrow. Not tomorrow, it should be today when people are here. Not going on a computer to get the paperwork. Not everybody uses a computer, and I don't anymore because I got hacked. And twice is because of the city of Perth Amboy. Twice, I got hacked because of you. And the third time, I believe, had something to do with you. So, so I've been hacked, so I don't go on a computer because of that. So you should have hard copies so people can see it. Now, you have another here, and I always see this for the water department. But I've never seen a bidding for the water department. Eighty thousand dollar engineering thing, but is there any bids? Never see any bids. I've complained that there should be bids every time they are part of the city of Perth Amboy. There should be bidding out. How do we know when our friends are not getting the contracts? Or not know this ideal? We don't know. We don't know if there's any bidding. They should be here. Every time you put out a bid, especially eighty thousand, there should be bids there so the people can see it. This is something that should be there for the public. You sit there and claim transparency. Transparency, you complain, but you never see it getting here. I sat where you sat and listened to all these budgets and looked at and asked for all that stuff. Actually, you had Middlesex in front of here that had a hearing. They had to close us down because they were afraid that we were gonna do it because of the feds and the Attorney General was here. I'm not saying they did anything wrong, but they stopped us from talking, and we found millions of dollars that was stolen because of no big contracts and people getting money, backdoor money, people getting a water heater, toilet, shower, dinners, lunch, everything else like that here. So the question is, it's gotta be. You guys go down to legal municipalities and you have lunch with people and go to parties with people that you vote on their contracts. Happens all the time, I know, because I used to laugh and walk around, and I didn't go to another party, so I laughed at other people. It was a joke. I'd go down and see where all these parties were and everything else like that. But then you come back and you vote on those contracts. Your broker donated five thousand dollars. I know it's fifteen thousand, but he ran a campaign, and he's sitting there complaining that the health insurance went up. Well, why is your broker donating money to you? And you're accepting money for your campaigns? And he's putting stuff on a website that is conservative and knocking people, the Hispanic people. No, that's okay, you've been doing it. Business administrator, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your name, I missed it.
Akil.
Akil, sorry, I don't want to be disrespectful.
Mr. Akil, can you get that?
Yes, Akil, Mr. Akil.
Sorry, don't want to be disrespectful. But it says here, you're a businessman, Wayne, and it says overseen all departments, put together eighty-seven million in budget with zero increase in two thousand twenty-one. Wasn't two thousand twenty-one when the American Rescue Act funds were given to the cities so taxes weren't raised or anything else like that? Wasn't that the year to go out with money and you shouldn't raise taxes anywhere, but you were bailed out by the American Rescue Plan? So putting that down here in a budget, eighty-seven million with zero increase, well, the mayor hasn't do it because he got sixteen million. I don't know, you maybe can tell me how much Wayne got under the American Rescue Fund, but that's like saying the government gave you free money and I didn't raise taxes. Nobody should have raised taxes that year because everybody got money. All right, I'll give you twenty seconds, but I'd like to know the answer on that budget. On how much that the contract was in the second change order.
The initial contract was seventy-five thousand. It was changed up to twenty, it was a change order one, twenty twenty-four for twenty-five, and this one is for twenty-five more.
All right, so it was an original seventy-five thousand dollar budget, and then twenty-five to twenty-five? Isn't that over the limit that it should have been rebidded?
Nope.
Why not?
Has to be approved by ordinance second change order, increase of sixty-six percent.
Sixty-six, wasn't there a limit of how much you can increase your contract?
Not with the state contract. This is, this has been under a state contract.
That's why there's so much political corruption around.
Thank you.
Because they do that stuff.
Anybody else?
Yes, April is a bad month. Good evening, everyone. Hello, Chris, Perth Amboy. If you're a retired city employee, does the city still cover your health coverage? You know, you retire for the city here. Did the city still cover their health coverage?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Now.
But they're not in all cases.
Okay. Excuse me?
It depends.
Okay. Don't, damn, I'm a little ahead of on this, but I heard something. We can't confirm it, but it's, it might happen. I hope it don't happen. We all know healthcare keeps rising. Believe me, it's just rising. And hospitals are saying, hospitals are saying, we're not taking your insurance plan no more. There's a problem with payouts and all. You see what goes on. But here's something very scary. I was reading the Daily News a while back. It's gonna come to the time, right here, this administration, your city council members are gonna be confronted with the talking heads, the people way up there, and they, you know, they'll go through your budget and all. And they're gonna say something to you that you're gonna flip out. Wait a minute, you crazy? And they're gonna make a suggestion, because New York City is gonna do this eventually, after the election. Nice here, they're gonna say, we have some bad news for you. You're gonna have to tell your city retired employees, they're gonna have to get their own healthcare coverage. They're gonna get, they're gonna have to get their own healthcare coverage because the money's getting tighter and tighter. It's squeezing now. New York City heard this, they told them this, it was in the Daily News. Imagine that happening here. They sit down behind closed doors and says, you know, you present your budget to the state, right? Am I correct? The state look at your budget, and they approve it? You know, New Jersey next year is gonna be very tight, gonna be ugly next year, and they're gonna, I hope it doesn't happen, come up to you and say, listen, you gotta start cutting some stuff here. What would that happen if they did that to you? I'm only assuming this. Hey, you gotta tell your employees, your retired employees, get their own healthcare coverage. They're already looking at this. This might happen. I'm not trying to scare you, I'm telling you what I'm hearing. This is not a game, this is what's going on. You know, I looked at the budget, and the people of town, and you know, some of them are giving up for healthcare coverage, and they're gonna be screaming. It's gonna get harder and harder. This year might be a good year for you people in some way, but next year, I don't know. And giving away all these little cute tax breaks, that's not gonna help either. All these little cute little pilot programs. Now what you gonna do? You gonna keep running to Trenton for money? Can you spare me a dime? Trenton's in a bad hole right now. Murphy don't wanna talk about it, but you're in a bad hole. Be prepared for a very rude awakening. I know this is a little ahead of the game here, but I see it coming. I see it coming. So I'm just giving you heads up. I could be wrong, you can disagree with me whatever. Oh, by the way, lots of luck with your new job. And it's coming. So I hope, you know, this year everything works out for you, but next year, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just wanna clarify that question of Mr. Down. Father had about the note bidding, the water projects. Every year, the city goes out and, and advertise different professional services, and they get bid, and once they open the bid, they assign the different professionals for engineering, architecture, and stuff like that. In this case, Andy is the, the city architect. He's the one that provided the quote. On that quote, everything that he'll be providing, all the services that he'll be providing for this project is atomized there, and that's how we go about in professional services. As far as projects, other part like replacement of water mains, catch basins, sewer mains, we, me in this case, advertise those projects. As a matter of fact, I advertised two projects. Tomorrow, I'm having the pre-bid meeting over here. On May twenty-second, we're gonna have the bid opening and receive the bids. Those bids will be on the agenda, looking for the approval of the award of the contract. That's how that works.
Thank you.
Mr. Perez, bids for what?
Mr. Perez, I'm sorry.
Why is it not put on the agenda?
Uh, uh, Mr.
It's, he's, the city's releasing requests for bids tomorrow, right? When the bids are awarded, they'll be on the agenda?
Yeah.
All right, but what are these, the, the, these bids that were, are gonna be opened on May twenty-second, what are they for?
One is for the replacement of catch basins, the other one is for the cleaning of the West Interceptor.
Thank you.
Cool.
Oh, you have another?
No, I said cool.
Okay. Anybody else?
Good evening, council members. My name is Daniel, I'm a lifelong resident of Perth Amboy. I wanted to address the council today because I have serious concerns about the lack of protections for the undocumented community and the civil liberties of Perth Amboy residents. I hope this council is aware of the increased presence of ICE agents across cities in our state like New Brunswick, Plainfield, Elizabeth, Newark, and our town, Perth Amboy. I am terror stricken because the federal government is increasing deportations for law-abiding undocumented residents, abducting student visa holders like Mahmoud Khalil, revoking green cards, terminating temporary status for refugees, and has recently deported a citizen who was a child undergoing cancer treatment. White House Secretary Carolyn Levitt also confirmed Trump's desire to send more US citizens to well-documented torture camps in El Salvador. The prisons are known to be subjected to incarcerating people to torture, ill-treatment, violations of due process, inhumane conditions, no access to adequate healthcare, and deficient food according to Human Rights Watch. This is unacceptable and disgraceful behavior, should not be tolerated against any community, let alone the undocumented and immigrant community in the US. According to the Institute of Taxation and Economic Policy, the estimated amount of undocumented folks paid in state and local taxes in New Jersey was one point three billion. Typically, they are unable to receive the full benefits of public assistance programs because of their status, and often have to pay the government thousands in fees to even apply for legal status. Despite immigrants being less likely to commit crimes than US-born citizens, somehow the government and the media have convinced everyday Americans that undocumented folks are the root of our problems. This white nationalist agenda is exploiting the real economic pains of American citizens to distract them from billionaires, corporations, and the one percent class from having endless handouts in our tax code. Just last Friday, the Republican-led House passed a bill that would cut four trillion in taxes for the rich, but somehow undocumented folks are to blame for our problems. Now ICE is on track to increase its budget to forty-five billion while Trump administration cuts billions in funding for medical research, universities, school districts, disabled and low-income communities like ourselves. This unimaginable reality of increasing the draconian institution of ICE will not only harm the undocumented community in Perth Amboy, but citizens and legal residents as well, and I'm gonna tell you why. ICE has scanned the driver's license of three, one in three adults in the US. ICE has access to the driver's license of three in four adults. ICE tracks the movement of drivers in cities and home to three in four adults. ICE can locate three out of four adults through their utility records. This domestic surveillance of Americans is a direct violation of Americans' right to privacy and forces not only to undocumented folks, but everyone to be a suspect to the federal government. While the administration is only strengthening its attacks on undocumented communities, you can do something right here in Perth Amboy. Today, I'm urging the Perth Amboy Council to demand Assemblywoman Lopez sign on to the Immigration Trust Act in the New Jersey Legislature. You all have cordial and professional relationships with the Assemblywoman, and I, like many other residents, are urging you to exert your influence to protect your constituents. All Perth Amboy residents are scared of what the current administration is capable of doing to the undocumented community, citizens, and legal residents. Perth Amboy is eighty percent Hispanic, and our community is suffering from the executive orders being done by the federal government. We are asking you to stand up for our community and to ensure that no residents in Perth Amboy have to live in fear. If you are unfamiliar with the Immigration Trust Act, the Immigration Trust Act will allow New Jerseyans to seek protection and support from state and local agencies without fear of deportation. Increasing trust in public agencies of all people regardless of immigration status to seek public services that are essential to health, education, and well-being of their families and the broader community. It protects personal information by limiting circumstances under which public agencies can collect information related to immigration status. It requires public schools, healthcare facilities, libraries, and shelters to adapt model policies to help people feel safer seeking public services to which they are eligible. It prohibits state and local law enforcement from cooperating with federal immigration authorities when doing so, is only voluntary under federal law. Again, I hope this council chooses to use their elected positions to create a positive change for our community and hold Assemblywoman Lopez accountable for not signing on to the Immigration Trust Act. She's currently the only Latino caucus member who has not signed on to the Immigration Trust Act, so I would hope that you use your power to tell her to sign on to that. And especially, she is running for election, and a lot of people will not be voting for her if she does not sign on to that. So I hope you listened to me today, and I also included references if you'd like time to review what I, the things that I've said here. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, it's really sad what's happening, but I'm sure she will. Thank you. She will do the right thing. Anybody else?
Good afternoon. William Petrick, seven ninety Hornet Street, Perth Amboy. So I see ordinance number five to exceed the municipal cap budget, but, and establish a cash bank, a cap bank. We've always done that every year, it's almost performa, except we've, we had the budget. In fact, when I was up there, we passed a resolution that the administration provide the council with the budget by February the fifteenth. Now we're in May, you could forget today, right? You're not getting the budget till tomorrow after this meeting? When are you introducing the budget?
The budget will be introduced today.
Do you have it in front of you? You do?
We had the introduction this.
Well, you have, you have the resolution to introduce it. When you have the resolution to introduce it, you should have the budget to introduce. But you don't have the budget, do you? Because we usually had, you know, the budget.
Don't we need to vote to introduce it?
Pardon me?
Don't we need to vote to introduce it?
You usually have it physically with you when you vote to introduce it. Otherwise, what are you introducing? Air? You don't have the budget in your hands, do you?
We do.
You do have the budget. So once you introduce it, then it'll be available to the public, right?
Yes, tomorrow, that's what they say.
But then, when have you reviewed it? Because part of this is talking about raising the taxes three and a half percent at least, right? Pardon? You're using five, you said five before.
Five point five.
Five point five, nice. But usually what you do is you, part of your job is to go through the budget to have, hold hearings with the different departments, and then determine whether or not there are areas where you could cut to save money so you don't have to raise it five point five percent. You can't rely on the administration, the head of which has gone bankrupt twice in business. He has no head for business, and, you know, he's running this business, which is the city of Perth Amboy. So you're the last, you know, stop in protecting the voters, the consumers of Perth Amboy, and, and their pocketbooks. That's part of your responsibility, right? To see where there is money savings. Just like, at least three of you have been on the, the school board. You know that the school board ran fiber optic cable throughout the whole district, and there's a lot of dark fiber, unused fiber, and now we have the police chief talking about running fiber throughout the whole city to link buildings and parks, and perhaps you could talk to Dr. Roman there because you have some relationship, having sat on the count, on the school board, and perhaps you can do some sort of a mutual agreement, right? right? Some shared services in order to save the taxpayers here some money with this fiber optic, you know, expense. That's just one idea off the top of my head. I'm sure there's a lot more in that budget that you guys should look at and examine because that's your responsibility. It's not just the rubber stamp everything. That's not really why you're sitting up there. But that's all for tonight. Have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Jill, please.
I just want to provide some points of clarification with regards to the budget. And if I misspeak in any way, perhaps Mr. Opal can correct me. The budget that's provided under a Faulkner Act municipality to the municipal council is introduced as presented. The budget process for the council then commences from that point forward. I want to correct what Mr. Green stated previously. The documents have to be filed with the state before they can be put on the site. That takes up to three days to happen. So until Monday, when all of the documentation that's required to be submitted to the state for them to begin the review of the budget as well, and all of the documents pertaining to that, some of which you're just passing this evening, have to be attached and provided. Until all of that takes place, we can't post all the documents on the website. So the website will be updated with the related documents for the introduction of the budget, probably by close of business on Monday. In addition, the introduction of the budget then calls for us to schedule the public hearing, which can only happen so many days after introduction. In addition, we have to go through state review to make sure the budget is statutorily compliant and that the state certifies that we can then adopt the budget at some point. In the meantime, the council can review the budget as presented to them and decide if they want amendments made, or if they want to have hearings, or whatever the process is going to be with regards to the budget. And then the public hearing has to take place no more than, within no more than 28 days from today. So the public hearing for the budget is going to be scheduled with your action of introducing for the May 28 meeting, cannot be any sooner than that. And that's the earliest of possible adoption of that budget as well, assuming that there's no amendments further, and as well that the state has certified that we can adopt the budget at that time.
Okay. One question, because we were planning to have the hearing on the 7th because we thought it was sooner that we needed to adopt. So we can have it after the 14 meeting, correct?
You can't have it with, until 28 days has elapsed from the date that you introduce.
Oh, okay.
So that's by statute, okay? That's set in the, in the local budget law and the New Jersey Administrative Code 5.30. So we can't move to a public hearing, and that has to be scheduled after, assuming you do introduce the budget tonight, then it has to be advertised within so many days. And there's a process that's followed in accordance with the statute.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, council. I just want to speak a bit about the fiber that was mentioned. The speaker is correct. There is dark fiber that the school board does have. About 15 years ago, I tried to go after that and to utilize that, and I was told no at that time. Most recently, about four years ago, three to four years ago, when we started the, they were running the other wire over to the high school, I revived that conversation, and I finally got a legal determination that that we would not be able to use that fiber because of the way it was purchased. It was purchased through a educational cooperative or something along those lines. I don't remember the exact words. I'd have to dig it out of my files. But the way that it was purchased, it was a cost savings that they've, that they got from the state of New Jersey, and they, some of the state of New Jersey funds matched that and so forth, so it could only be used for educational purposes. So I tried to do that for the city, utilizing that to make the most sense. As a matter of fact, when we built our public safety complex, knowing that the Lopez School was going there well before it was even named, we, we had a conduit run to that school so that we could connect to our city because we're still in the impression that could happen. And then that's when we were told it was unable to do so. But we were prepared to do that and to connect to that dark fiber. We can connect to, for their security purposes, for their security systems and so forth. That's not, we don't have that now, but we would be able to connect to that, but not actually use their fiber for anything city-related.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Vince Macule, 215 Sheridan. Can I just discuss, this is not going to solve your budgetary process in saving homeowners and that, whatever. But I just reviewed the miscellaneous tax department records that you have before you. And there are three things, I think, that either former councilmen or people within the financial department put on the, that miscellaneous budget. One of them is the Armory Restaurant, which has a $3 million revenue each year, or this past year. You have that as a parking part of the miscellaneous budget. And it's reported that they've, you've gotten zero monies in any kind of tax return from the Armory Restaurant. And I state that because formerly, the other military facility used to be public parking. And I understand Green Acres has been a point of legal challenge in the city's past. But the reason why I'm bringing up to this is that they are making money by having people park there. So the public right to park there should be preserved as well because over at the landings, you cannot, according to their signs, park there. So I'd like to just state that. Another part of the tax report, and again, this is not going to solve all the financial problems of the city, is the YMCA. They've done a tremendous amount of good work. It's one of the most outstanding projects that the city has had in recent history, helping young people and providing recreational services. But I think at some point, allowing the facility to be used by, for swimming tournaments and other uses, the city should have some return for that, from that facility. I think that without a doubt, that should be. And this is not criticizing any contribution they're making. I think they just purchased $2.4 million Remington facility for affordable units. Great if that's the process that the city needs, but also that functioning of that facility should, should not hinder the city from collecting some monies. Third, that was mentioned on the, the returns from taxes miscellaneous was landlord registration. I have before you, the rent control ordinance reads 353-9, landlord identity registration, $10. I think it's been adjusted since then. As of this month, in your report, the city has collected $90 this year. And probably for landlords that have gone before boards or have come forward and trying to be conscientious in providing the city a miniscule amount of $90. Again, I'll end my comments with this. The city's entire budget has gone, increased from 19% for healthcare insurance course to almost a quarter of the, of the budget is going for the cost of healthcare. Do we need any other reason to try to be proactive and to speak forcefully for Medicare for all, for this city and this country? I don't think so. A housing cost, they say you're stressed by having a housing cost more than 30% of your budget, in your family budget. This city is faced with a 25% just to go to a doctor, just to seek healthcare. That is an atrocity. And I thank you for listening to my three points, but I think you should look into them because they were part of the tax collection miscellaneous budget return that you viewed.
Hold on one minute. Wait. The parking lot at the Armory?
Yes.
Is a public parking lot?
Yes, I said that.
Right.
Thank you.
But what I'm saying, no, it is a public parking lot.
Thank you.
People can park there for free.
Yes.
Right now.
Yes.
So the Armory doesn't charge people to park there anymore.
The problem is, the former landings was also a free parking area. And I think that a restaurant that's getting $3 million in revenue each, each this year should come forward a little bit of money. It's part of your miscellaneous budget. Why is it put there? Tell me why, councilman. Why is it put on that budget?
I can't, I can't answer that, but I know that if somebody was going to the Barge Restaurant or going down the waterfront, right?
That's great.
They could park in the parking lot. At one time, you couldn't park in the lot because the Armory had control. They no longer have control of the parking lot. It was turned back over to the city.
I understand. There's a legal as well as a public use. It's great that public can go down there, but it's primarily a usage that the Armory has availability there. It's part of your miscellaneous budget. And my last point is, please support the Immigration Trust Act. City, I viewed an educational experience one night or one afternoon where children came from each part of South America, demonstrating their roots, not only in their country, but coming here and seeking some kind of better life. I think that this council should support this, the Immigrant Trust Act with the state.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move it.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay. We'll go to closed session. I need a motion to go to closed session.
Move it.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, after the closed session, we'll come back to the meeting, the council meeting. I need a motion to come back from closed session.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? This is the council meeting for April 30th, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, Mrs. Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board, in the city clerk's office, and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chamber, City Hall 260 High Street, right after the caucus and closed session. Right now, it's 7:15. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individual presidents, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to take, to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz.
She's absent.
With excuse.
With excuse.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present.
So let's stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, please watch over this governing body. Help us to have the wisdom and understanding of the needs of our residents in our city. Also, I want to pray for those young kids, for our kids, the students, and also for the officers abroad, the troops that are defending our freedoms and their family. And with that, I say amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speaker per ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 Sec. of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about addition. I need a, I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, anyone wants to speak on this? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes.
Number two, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Filming. Ordinance number 1701-2013, adopted October 23rd, 2013, also known as Chapter 217 Sec. of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? It's open to the public. Anybody? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes.
Number three, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey to amend an ordinance entitled Ordinance Fixing and Establishing a Schedule of Salaries and Salary Ranges and Increments for Officers and Employees of the City of the, of Perth Amboy. Ordinance number 218-79, as amended, adopted July 3rd, 1979. This is the PBA Local 13 for January 1st, 2025 to January 1st, 2028. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
I abstain.
Not yet. I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, I need a motion to adopt.
Move it. Second. Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
I abstain. I'm a life member of PBA 13.
Council President Tejeda?
Before I vote, I just want to congratulate the administration and also the PBA for having such a great conversation and coming up with a good contract for both parties. So my vote is yes. Number four, ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey authorizing an ordinance entitled E-Mobility Devices and Lithium-Ion Batteries. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a mo, wait, to open to the public. Anybody? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes.
Number five, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 48, column 4-45-14. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Agenda, public comment. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Reports, Fallon Barczewski Tax Collector submitted the monthly report of collection for the month of March 2025. Number two, Jill A. Goldie CFO Controller submitted a copy of the Standard and Poor's bond rating report. Ordinance, first reading, non-public discussion. Number one, ordinance of the city council of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, authorizing the vacation of certain portions of Front Street and Broad Street pursuant to NJSA 48, column 67-1. I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, approving certain amendments to the Focus 2020 redevelopment plan, Area 1, the gateway pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number three, ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, approving certain amendments to the Focus 2020 redevelopment plan, Area 2, the waterfront pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. I need a motion.
I move it.
Second.
All in...
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, look through the resolution, and I think we should do the introduction by itself.
Agreed.
Anything?
No, I agree with you.
Anything else?
Nope, no, good.
Okay, so the consent agenda is R.191-425 through R.202-425, R.204-425 through R.205-425. I need a motion?
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. R.203-425, authorizing the introduction of the calendar year 2025 budget. I need a motion?
Move.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Communication, Mayor Hellman J. Cava, recognizing employees with work anniversary in March, April, and May 2025. Public portion, I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? It's open to the public on any matter.
Stay your name and address. Good evening, Atlanta, Perth Amboy here. Let me ask you a pretty crazy question. Are we a sanctuary city?
Go ahead, get all your...
Are we a sanctuary city?
Get all your questions, and then somebody will get back to you.
Okay.
Finish your...
Yeah. If we are a sanctuary city, and I know this because if we are one, if you're Sanitizers, we're gonna have, well, we've been having problems here, in a town here. And I know you want to help everybody out here in the town. One of the problems that we have, and I know it's growing, is with a lot of the migrants came here. Okay, they came here, they came for good reason, whatever. But what's happening now is, they, they're stuck here, so now they're homeless, and they have no place to go. You see, the kid brought it up here, the young man, about the situation. The other problem we have here, and I know a lot of you don't like to hear it, there's a lot of people coming out of the hospital here, and they have what they call mental illness. Some of it's mild, some of it's very severe. And this is nothing new. This has been going on for years. And I brought this up once before. What other towns are doing, they're bringing the people over here. They've been doing it for years. They're dropping them off over here because they don't want them, and they don't have a solution, so they drop their problems here. It was brought up in other, in other council meetings and all. So you're having a problem here with this. You're gonna have a serious problem, and it's something you're gonna have to start paying attention about the homelessness here. A lot of them have, like I said, they have personal problems. Some of them don't want any help. They don't want any help at all. Leave me alone. I don't want no help, because they gotta go by rules and, you know, you know, criteria they have to go by. You can't drink tomorrow, you can't take no drugs. That doesn't work for them. And then they become a problem. The other problem is, it starts to lead to crime. Crime starts coming. I noticed that, because I'm gonna let you on something I should have broke before. I was attacked by a homeless man. Not serious. I got the police report. We had a little confrontation in front of a library, long story, and I tell him, hey, stay distant. The library's had a camera, they caught him. He did what they call a simple assault, whatever. He was a little big bully. He got locked up, they let him out. Okay, he's losing his strength, and he was warned. I didn't bring it up before, but I brought, I'm bringing it up now. So if it can happen to me, it can happen to you. We have some people here, you're gonna have to start controlling them. They're wandering the streets, and they're gonna hurt somebody, seriously, hurt somebody. Even with these e-bikes, electric bikes, that's another thing. These bikes got, you better go do something with these bikes. Somebody's gonna get hurt, might be one of yous get hurt with these bikes, or they'll damage your vehicle. Hey, I got no insurance, tough luck. You're gonna have a problem because you're a sanctuary city. Not you, many other cities have seen it too, but the problem is here. Let's concentrate here. I know, like I said, I know you want to bring everybody, whatever the thing is, but it's bringing their problems here. They're hurting the businesses, they go into the store, they steal, they let them go, but they can't do nothing for them. Because, well, I think we have a no bail, something like that law here. Minor offense, they let you go, and they're gonna keep doing it. It's doing problems here in this town. Maybe you don't see it, or you don't want to see it, but it's gonna affect the city here. You better start, you know, talking to these business owners, people, whatever, even in the library, if you're coming in the library, I think they put that under control with some of the homeless. The library's been very generous, they help them out, let them use the computer, but you got some wise guys in there. You better sit down and talk to the library, what happened in the past. Stop protecting the criminals. That's what, law and disorder, there you go. Stop protecting the troublemakers. That's what you're doing here, and it's escalating, it's escalating. You're gonna have to do something. I don't know, maybe you're getting money for a sanctuary city. Fine, that's great, take the money, but it comes with its problems. You know, hate to bring it up, but somebody's gotta bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close the public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay. Council comments?
I just want to thank everyone who, as usual, participated. Just wanted to say farewell. I know he's not here, and he had to leave, but farewell to Mr. Green and wish him the best of luck, and we will miss him. But also, we want to welcome Mr. Akil, and looking forward to working with you, really excited to working with you. And just really not much to say tonight, just want to say happy Cinco de Mayo to everyone. I know it's next week, and I think the following week after that is Happy Mother's Day, so all you mothers, Happy Mother's Day to you, because I probably may not see you during that week, so I hope you enjoy with your children. Also, enjoy the nice weather that we've been having, participate in any upcoming events that we are having, and if you're not sure, just always check the website for the list of events that we are having within the city. And I think that's about it. Have a good evening, everyone, and enjoy.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Good evening, everyone. So I just wanted to start off with, I know homelessness has been mentioned multiple times, and I know that is something that the city is working on, so I just wanted to say thank you to the providers, to PROD, the multi-service department, Steve Jobin and his team, you know, employees at Alice Street, the police department. I know that they have been working hard to find homeless people shelters, you know, food, clothing, all that stuff. So I just wanted to say thank you for all of that. I know that takes a lot of work and a team effort. I wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Green, and that I hope he enjoys this new stage of his life, and welcome to Mr. Akil. I look forward to working with you. I'm sure you will bring, you will be a good, you know, right hand to this team. And speaking of Cinco de Mayo, Horizon is having a workshop on May 6th, and it's called Let's Talk, no, Let's Taco About Insurance. So if you're interested in learning more about insurance, Horizon will be having a workshop at 101st Street in Perth Amboy, and they will be giving out tacos that night, so that you, it's an eat and learn type of situation. We're getting out of here early, so I hope that you guys enjoy the beautiful weather and have a good evening. Thank you.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Welcome, Mr. Akil. Day one of, I hope, many years to come.
Yes.
Mr. Green, you're not here, but it was a pleasure, you know, serving on the council with you, with being the BA. Next week, on May 9th, police officers from all over the world will meet here in New Jersey and Virginia and start a journey on bicycles from here to the Police Memorial in Washington, DC. It's during Police Week. The Perth Amboy Police Department is participating in this this year, that, like they've had since 2002, where there's gonna be 25 officers from the Perth Amboy Police Department that will be riding to the Police Memorial in New Jersey, and one city councilman will be joining them. This will actually be my 15th year riding the bike to Washington from New Jersey.
Wow. Good for you, Mr. Ten. Ten.
And I'll be a month away from my 70th birthday. I turned 70 in June.
Well, happy birthday.
Don't forget to vote on my birthday, because my birthday's on June 10th. Make sure you vote that day. Anyway, other than that, I'm good.
Congratulations, Mr. Puccio, on your journey to Washington, and I hope everything is safe for you and all the officers that are going to be participating.
Thank you, Madam President.
I also wanted, welcome, Mr. Akil. It will be like, a little different, you know? We have to get to know each other and to kind of work together. The same thing happened with Mr. Green, and I wish him the best. It was very nice working with him, and I wish him, whatever he's doing after this journey that he had with us, I hope he enjoy his retirement or whatever he's doing. But everybody else, thank you for participating tonight, and have a good evening. I need a motion to close, to close the council meeting.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? We're done. Mr. Arrocho, you just got here.
You made it just in time.